Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the two republics for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you all for coming.
The camera's live?
It has been, yep. He just says shut it off when we're done and pick it up. First on our agenda is the CBDG funding grant application in the scheduling of public hearing. Bill, you want to, if you want to, chair here, here, there, somewheres? Let's see if we can.
So we talked about funding for the wastewater system at the last board meeting and the board authorized funding, or applying for funding to get money to do a study to look at the INI, which is the infiltration in the collection system where we have water coming into the sewer mains that shouldn't be groundwater, you know, roof leaders, stuff like that, which is a problem because we're taking water into the wastewater plant and running that through the system and paying to run it through the system and it's expensive to do that. In this last flood and storm event over Christmas, there's over 3 million gallons a day coming into the plant, 3.2, it was a lot.
It was up there.
Compared to our permit, which is 1.55.
Yeah, it pretty much doubled.
Yeah.
Doubled the amount of flow.
It's, you know, over the years, it gets, you know, it's gotten worse and worse. So we applied for that funding two years ago now. It was not successful. We're going to try to re-up the application. The application is to do a study on the collection system, to go out with cameras and clean the sewer system and look for the leaks and then come up with a plan for, this is where the leaks are, these are the most severe ones. What's the plan to fix these leaks? How much will that cost? And then use that as a basis to find funding to do the fix.
And doing this will give us a little more of an upper hand trying to find money for the fix, correct?
Correct. That's the basis of this, you know, money is to do the study and that's basically the application to do the fix. So that process is underway and we're working on that application. Separate from that, over the last week or so, we came to, the CBDG program has been around for a number of years. The last several years, the village hasn't been eligible for it because it's based on, eligibility is based on census data and it's based on the low to moderate income percentage of the community, which is, you know, one of the items on the census once it's established and it's updated on an annual basis. The data that the state has been using for that over the last several years has put Walton in 43, 46 percent and the threshold's 51. So we haven't been able to apply for that track. We are putting some other applications for other communities together. So we're starting to look at the program and I was in it this past week and they updated the census data and Walton's now at 53.99. So makes, which makes the village eligible to apply for funding through the Community Development Block Grant Program. And that can fund water and sewer improvements that benefit the entire community. Generally things at the source and on the sewer side at the sewer plant because everybody's wastewater goes to the sewer plant. We know we have needs at the wastewater plant, largely some of the original equipment to the plant, which is, you know, coming up on 45, approaching 50 years old. And those items are items that the city doesn't contribute to the funding of. Things like the clarifiers and the original digesters, you know, those types of items. So we saw it as an opportunity, a potential opportunity for the village to apply for funding through this program for work at the wastewater plant. And again, it's separate from what we talked about at the last board meeting. We can apply for both programs, or the village can apply for both programs.
What do you need from us then to go ahead forward this effect? That's what we want to do.
Right now, the initial step, the application requires that a public hearing be conducted and that we have to add in the paper and whatnot. So if the board wants to proceed with it, we would recommend scheduling a public hearing for probably the next board meeting, which is February 1st. And we would, you know, we'll work with Jody and get the add in the paper. And we'll have a public hearing and that's an opportunity for the public to say, we think it's a good idea to apply for funding, or we think it's a bad idea to apply for funding, or anything else in between. And then that's put into the application and those are due March 5th, I believe. The application itself for this program, we anyway have been working with Mark Blower, who's a grant writer out of Pennsylvania. He sent you a proposal here a couple of days ago. We've worked with Mark and another, other communities here in Delaware County. He speaks this program probably a little better than we do. There are a litany of rules and regulations and reporting and things like that that have to be done with it and it requires, you know, somebody to do the administration of it. So we would recommend, you know, trying to bring Mark in to prepare the application. There is a cost associated with that. On our side, we would prepare the engineering report, which would go with the application and it would say what the ask is, you know, we need to put in clarifiers because they're 45 years old and we can't get parts warm anymore and they're tired. You know, with more technical stuff behind that. But, you know, we would anticipate applying for, you know, up to a million dollars, which is the cap for this program. And that is 100% grant. If you're doing a project that's more than, you know, 2, 3, 5, whatever number, then it would be on, you know, the village to find other monies. But up to a million dollars is 100% fundable under the CBDG program.
And there was a fee for him, correct?
Yeah, I think Mark's proposal was 35 or 37.
37,500.
37,500, I remember.
So he does ask for that and I think there's, you know, he asked for half upfront, half when the thing goes in in March.
Okay, but we don't have to do any of this until after our public hearing, correct?
Yeah, you could authorize it at the public hearing if that's, and Mark would probably be on the line during the public hearing to, you know, if people have questions about the program of what about this, what about that? He can, you know, speak to that a little better than probably I can about some of the specifics. There was actually a webinar on the program yesterday, you know, with some of the updated rules and regulations because they change on a yearly basis, it seems like. So right now, it's scheduling a public hearing for February 1st. And then on the 1st, have the hearing authorize, you know, if the board's amenable, authorize Mark to do the application and authorize the application to be submitted to the state. So it'd go in in March. We probably wouldn't find out for four to six months. They're up in the air, so it's, you know, probably a next year project, but this year is find the money.
Is 37,500, 37,500?
No.
No, 3,750. Yeah, it's not that big.
My hair wasn't smoking, Mark.
Oh, I wrote it as 37,000. Thank you.
37,500 could be 37,500 or 37,500.
The project cost, you know, so I say a million dollar, you know, which is a big number. That number would include money for administration, which would be somebody like Mark or, you know, somebody else that does that work. So if you get the grant, there's a litany of paperwork that has to go along with it to make sure you do all the reporting and there's a lot of paperwork. So you would retain an administrator to help with that paperwork and engineer to draw the plans up.
And all that can come out of that grant though. It's all one big. You don't have to worry about having.
If there's any other administrative mailings and ads in the paper and, you know, any legal stuff that's required, you know, that can, excuse me, come out of that as well. So really the only, if it's awarded and it's competitive and I, you know, I can't sit here and guarantee you're going to get it, but, you know, if it's awarded, the only, really the only cost to the village would be this initial application cost.
Which is.
Yeah, the 37.
37,500, 37,500, okay. So anybody got any questions for Bill? All right, then, do we want to schedule a public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, we get that affirmative motion.
My motion second.
Motion made second to schedule a public hearing on February 1st?
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Now, did you want to? Hire? Him, retain, whatever the proper word is?
Do we want to do that now or do we want to do that when we?
If we do it now, it gets started a little quicker.
Well, then we'd be able to already have the check ready in case we wanted to move forward with it?
Yeah.
At the, it's part of the abstract?
A suggestion from you. What do you suggest?
Yeah.
It would be easier?
It's a tight, if we start now, it gives us a couple more weeks. It's a fairly tight timeline. They usually give you three months to do this application process and this year it's, you know, two.
So if we want to retain him, we can do, is it listed in there? We can do 50% upfront?
Yeah.
Is that what it is? Okay. Do we get a motion on that?
I'm making a motion.
Motion made. Steve, you seconded?
Yes.
Steve seconded to retain, pardon me?
That would be on approval of the February hearing, public hearing.
Yes.
Just go for it.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions on that before we vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Think anything else we need to discuss right now?
That's all I had. That's probably enough.
Probably enough. It's more than enough.
Good to see you, Bill.
Yeah. Many moons.
Many years.
Yeah, I know we have other projects going on, you know, with the highway garage and the water project and a lot of that stuff is the state's kind of put the brakes on a lot of, pretty much all the money this past year. So I think that's starting to open up with these couple of applications coming out.
Just so, Juno, too, you've been in contact with the new senator to hopefully, some of the monies, we've already re-engaged so that we are keeping our grant money that's been promised to us. So, yeah, thanks, Eric.
So they got a lot of calls.
I'm sure they got the same one from everybody.
Yeah.
They're acknowledging everything that got approved, but they're not saying anything's coming.
No, that's what I mean. Jody got the email back from Dazney this morning and, you know, all your paperwork's in order, but we can't cut the check, see?
Well, there's no money in the bank.
I think the city will be the same way with the sewer plant.
It depends on what the federal government does too.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot, in my opinion, a lot of it's being leveraged to, you know, push the federal government to try to release more money.
But anyway, you look at it, we're going to just try to keep engaging. If you've got a dialogue with them, let's just keep engaging so that we have our best possible chance to keep it.
Right. And for, you know, these new ones, you know, to reach out and say, we submitted for this program. Can you write a letter of support to EFC or, you know, and we can give them specifics on the programs. But, you know, so that, you know, we're hopefully at the top of the pile when a program comes through.
Exactly.
This will be a bug in their ear.
They're going to know you by first name bases, aren't they, Eric?
It's helpful.
It is. All right, Bill. Thank you. I don't know if you want to stick around for the rest of our shindig?
That's all the show I got.
That's all the show you got? All right. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks, Bill.
Yeah.
Nice, bud. I'm going to jump to number three on the agenda for a moment. The treatment plant has a scrap pump that sits at C word and they want to be able to scrap it. Talking about it, it's going to probably, we'd have to send somebody up to get it, bring it back and then scrap it and go along through, but I think by the time you get all that involved, just let them, they're going to scrap it. It's in their way or whatever. Just let them scrap it and it's theirs. I mean, I don't believe there's going to be a whole lot out of that because it's, I mean, it's a pump, but it's not that heavy. Not for, not for tons of money anyway. So what does the board want to do? We have to deem that surplus and then go ahead and let them know that they can scrap it and it's theirs.
Scrap it or sell it?
The grant has no value.
It has no value to anything.
So let's deem it as scrap.
You can do that too. Whatever you want to do.
Yeah, we can declare a scrap. I make a motion to scrap it.
Second that.
Motion made to deem the pump scrap and let them take care of it up at C word. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right. Now we go down to what we originally were going to be here for is the retiree reimbursement policy. I know we've got some information out that's, people have gone and looked at. Jody's called our insurance company and I know Dick has talked to a few people. So I'm going to let you kind of let us know what kind of information you got and between you and Jody, we'll hopefully have something figured out here. Because I know you've talked with the insurance company a little bit of stuff. And then Bud, she's got some information too.
As we discussed last meeting, each of our contracted union represented employees is covered by, in their contract that we will pay $300 a month after they retire in 20 years of service. Some of $300. I don't know, is there a big question in that? I can ask, but $300, doesn't specifically say what it's for? It says for medical coverage.
So it's health insurance.
That's the word they use, Jody, in the contract. Do you have a copy? I didn't bring that with me.
It says health insurance. When we did that contract, however many years ago it was now, it was explained to us at that time, as far as the Teamsters go, I don't know about the police or whatever, but.
They all read the same.
Right, they all read the same. On our end of it, it was specifically, it was clear that it was for health insurance premium, not medical expenses. It was to help pay for health insurance. Now.
The wording says health insurance payments.
Right. Because like when we did it, Roberta had told us, you know, this money would go towards, so if you retire, you get $300 toward your health insurance, wherever you end up picking. Not medical expenses, you know, not deductibles and that, that kind of thing. Well, yeah, it doesn't clarify like for spouses. But I myself, as a taxpayer, you know, I wouldn't feel right. So if I wasn't around or if I went on different insurance, would pay the insurance of my spouse. You know what I mean? Because they were, they'd never even stepped foot in the village or in the building or whatever.
Is that where it's specific to? For retiree?
Yes.
It says.
All right, retiree.
For employees.
Okay. Well, that's specific.
Yeah, so your spouse would be an employee, you know.
All right. So if, depending on how you want to look at it, and if that's what you want to apply specifically as that, that all we're going to pay is the premiums. Now, we have several people who they have sent in co-pay. And some people sent in just their premiums and that's why we've been paying. The problem we have, and we've looked at it, a couple of different solutions at it and I talked to the girls in the office. And one of the problems they have is if we start paying or have been paying for co-pays on insurance, there is a list given out by the federal government and we do not have that list. It's not included in there what's considered medical expenses. And it's very broad.
Right.
So right now, what we've been doing is the girls have been trying to decide, which one should I be paying for? And this is where the problem comes in. Now, if it is just for premiums and that's what we agree on, then we need to notify everybody that that's all we're going to pay is just payments towards a premium. And the premium, I don't know if there's any way to separate if you have a family policy, which ones for the primary, which ones for the secondary, whatever. But if they send in a receipt or a payment of premium, we can do it right here in the office. That shouldn't, that's not a problem, right? Jody, you can tell, you know a premium when you see it.
Right.
Okay, it will say it's been paid to, it's not being paid to a physician, it's not being paid to some medical facility, it's not being paid to a dentist, it isn't paying for a prescription at a pharmacy. It is simply for the premium to an insurance company. If that's what we want to do, then we need to make that clear. We also need to notify the people that that's all we're going to pay so that they don't submit us a bill that has 50 different inserts for, you know, what they've had done. Now, if we were to do it the other way, we could sign up with the company where they get a credit card and it could be used for whatever we want to give it to them for. But the simplest way, if we say it's just simply for premiums and that's all people submit, then I think, Jody, we can handle that right here in the office. We don't have to contract with anybody. But we need to get that on the table and make sure that everybody is aware that that's what we're doing. We have in the past been paying some co-pays. Now, I'm assuming that the federal government requires everyone to have some form of health insurance and we will cover that premium for the employee. Is that the way I understand what the board wants to say? And I think we need to make that clear to everybody that that's what that statement says. We will pay premiums for your insurance.
Right.
That's all we're paying.
Now, if you have, you know, say, say I was retired and I had a plan to cover my wife and myself, that's one thing, you know, you use your $300 toward that premium. But if something had happened, which I know we've got instances where some people retired so they have this insurance, which is free, but their spouse has to buy insurance. So they're using that, which technically, if I read the contract and how it was explained, you would not be able to use it for that, not for the spouse, unless that spouse was covered on your policy. You know what I mean? Because otherwise, I mean, why, I just, I mean, me as a taxpayer, don't make sense, but. I had someplace else I was going to go with that.
Well, so the way I look at it, I don't know how much I would change in this language other than the fact of adding, unless that spouse was covered under the policy, you could submit for reimbursement.
Right.
Cover.
It would be hard to differentiate if it's an inclusive policy, what, you know, if you have.
The spouse.
What you call a family plan.
Right.
Or two-person plan. The fees are a little bit higher. In looking at this, they said the average individual health insurance is almost $400 a month.
Oh, yeah. I know my in-laws are paying like 500 bucks each and they have to do their age, whatever. They have to have separate policies. You can't have a two-person. So in that case, you would pay, you know, say, if it was my father-in-law, you would pay for his, but my mother-in-law would be on her own. You know what I mean? Or, and also, like I said before too, that this is all part of your planning when you retire. You know what I mean? Which is a cheaper way. Should I go on this insurance, leave my spouse out here hanging? Or do we do this and have the $300 assistance for a premium? And I know a lot of that changes with age and type of.
Right, you have to.
Insurances, you know. I know, I understand that change, but that's all part of your retirement planning, I should say.
The $300 generally would not cover even a single person's policy if it's a reasonable policy. There are standards for these policies. The federal government says you have to have a certain type of coverage. It has to cover certain things. And if you get one of those, it's probably going to cost you for an individual more than $300 a month. So I don't think it's a question of, well, is it sufficient to buy insurance for family? No, it's not. It just isn't there. So what you're saying is I think probably everybody should, if they follow the rules, be buying a policy after they leave here and it would cost them $300. Now, if you were, say, in a person whose spouse has insurance, which also covers you, again, that $300 probably isn't going to cover the cost of having that person included in your policy. And most of them, another employer won't pay for it. But the fact is, if you don't have, if your insurance, your employee gives you, or your employer or your spouse's employer pays for your health insurance, we're not going to provide anything. Is that what I'm to understand?
Yeah, because that $300, that was, you know, when we presented that and we were just talking to our union rep about it before it even went to the board, that $300 was just to be used toward your premium. You know, so your premium, it could be $700 a month, but at least you're getting $300 out of pay that.
Or he just said, if you don't have a premium, then.
Right, you don't get it.
You don't get any of that.
Correct. Yeah, that's exactly.
That's what I'm saying. If you don't have a premium, you're actually paying, or your spouse is paying. There's no money coming out of your household to pay a premium, then we wouldn't be paying.
Right. And I've talked to a couple of the guys in the shop about it as well and they, they're reading it the same way I've been talking about it, so.
The majority of the people who are submitting a claim on this $300, that is what they're getting paid for.
Their insurance payments.
Their insurance payments. I think other people, as long as they understand this is what you're supposed to be sending us, they would still get this $300. And the only thing I would suggest that we do is change the wording that it's not $300 a month. It is $3,600 per year. Do you pay your premium all in one shot? Do you pay? The problem with the wording that we have suggests that if you have a policy and you pay $800 this month, we'll give you $300. If you don't pay anything next month, you get nothing.
Right.
So I think it has to be annually, calendar year.
$3,600. That way, if you say you pay your bill, your premiums once a year instead of once a month, you'd be able to take care of what you need to pay.
But it would be based on, excuse me, I shouldn't have said calendar year. It's actually our fiscal year, which runs June to June, not January to January. The building is the oddball.
Something like that, would that have to be, would the unions have to agree to the, I know it's just, it's minor, but would they have the wording?
It would be.
If it covers what that, your contract says and everybody understands that that's what the contract says, then I don't think it's a problem.
I think they should still change. It makes more sense for them to change it when they do their contract because it does, then would state $3,600 for the year because right now their contract says $300 a month. So I think that it would be smart on their part to change it to the 36 on your guys' contract.
Couldn't change the language in bargained contracts.
Well, we may not have to change anything, in particular with the DPW because all their new contracts, that only includes people who were hired prior to 2017.
But the Teamsters' contract is going to be expiring here anyway.
Right, they're in the process of reading it. So they could change the wording at that time.
Right.
They're not losing anything.
They're not losing anything.
It's just a word change.
Just a word thing.
But your new hires aren't covered by that.
Right, yeah, we got two, three guys, no, two.
Two.
Two guys that aren't covered.
May have 2018's changed.
As far as the police go, if you decide to change the wording, we could probably send that in, talk with their union rep or whatever, and they can probably amend that section.
As a proposal.
Yes.
Probably not much of a big deal, just a word change.
Well, I don't know. I don't know how much teeth the Teamsters have these days, but I know unions are pretty, you know, if you change a word in a document, they want to know what that word is.
Well, I'm not saying we change anything in the document. It's just a matter of understanding. This is what that, it says it will pay, because they all read exactly the same.
Right.
That's our definition.
And it's just a matter of clarification. What does that actually mean? And it says for premiums, I believe.
It just says.
Health insurance.
Payments. It says health insurance payments.
Yeah, it doesn't say.
Health insurance payment, not pharmacy. And in the government plans, and what these people have these credit cards that pay for this. It specifically says it'll pay for this or this, and you don't have to pay for everything. And premiums are included as a separate item.
Separate.
Separate.
Yeah, there's health insurance payments and there's medical expenses.
Yeah, expenses are separate, you know, and it defines which are acceptable. And they have changed radically over the last four years and they keep coming out with different plans. But these are for insurances that your employer is providing, how it's done, what has to be included, what doesn't have to be included. As long as we stay with just this, we'll pay a premium, that's it.
Anything else want to be discussed?
The only other, yeah, you probably want to get a motion.
Yeah, well.
Well, when you decide what you're really going to do here.
How you want to do it, make a motion as to.
That our understanding, that the agreements, the statement as, is included in all those, is to be understood that our payments will be for insurance premiums only.
Yep.
And to change it to $3,600 for our fiscal year.
Yes, $3,600 per fiscal year.
Only question there is, I mean, this is a contract with an employee.
Right.
And this contract was agreed upon by the employee and the village when it was drafted. Now we're changing that.
No, we're not.
Well, we're clarifying.
Clarifying what it's a?
But clarifying does limit what they have been reimbursed for up to this point. So you're changing, we're changing their understanding of how this works. So you're changing, we're changing their understanding of how this works.
We're not changing, we're correcting. We're correcting because it has been handled inappropriately.
No, I agree.
As a matter of information, when we talked to the other systems that do it for you, in other words, we're not asking the girls down here to figure out what's included, what isn't included, that's when I went back and checked, and if you read through this, you'll see that it pretty much says that these are separate things, and that paying for co-pays, and who's co-pays, and how you submit it.
It needs to be spelled out.
Needs to be spelled out.
And right now, nothing is in this, right now, spells out that that's what it's for. The only thing it says, it's for insurance.
And it says employee.
Employee insurance payment. So basically, we're not changing anything other than we are just making sure this is how it's got to be, so that if there's any more bills that come in that are other than insurance premium payments, that's not part of this. And that's, by the reading of it and even looking back, it's never been part of it.
Right, yeah, no. You can almost send, you know, send a letter to everybody who's participating in that right now, along with the copy of that portion of the contract, so, because I mean, you take a couple of the guys that are retired from here, they no longer have a contract, they don't know how it's worded, and, you know.
Okay, so there's a motion, read it, what's the motion again?
I don't know.
Will you finish that?
No, I didn't.
Uh, no.
I didn't start one.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right. I didn't know we were that close.
You have a question?
Um, yeah, so.
Does somebody online has a question, or you?
No.
Oh, I thought you were going to read somebody's.
Internal deliberation thought. Um, okay, so I get it, that it needs to be clarified, and that echoes the understanding of bargained contract language. My thought, though, is sort of like, long-term thinking of breach of contract complaints, if someone submits these things and says, well, why the hell am I not getting it? You know, this is what my contract had said all this time. Do we have any reservations about breach of contract?
Well, no, honestly, I think what's happened is, previous boards have just okayed them, if, for lack of better words.
Because they didn't know. The contract clearly states health insurance, so it's not even a breach of contract. Like I said, when we did that negotiation, as far as for the Teamsters go, and this is wrote the same way for everybody, but I remember when we did ours, it was told, and the couple of guys that we have that are retired, were part of those negotiations, were told that it was $300 toward your health insurance premium, basically, not medical expenses, but help to help pay for insurance. So it's not a breach of contract if they go back and start doing it the right way. What's going to happen, you might have a couple of people might get a little upset at first, when they get the letter stating, you know, we've been, we have been doing it wrong, you know, this is how it actually reads, so we have to make a correction on what's done, you know, so I think you might have a couple of people get a little upset, but it's like a Band-Aid, I think, just rip it off, be, because I mean, you're not, you're not a breach of contract there at all. You know what I mean? It's not, if, you know, one of our guys was getting for, say, prescriptions or whatever, and then all of a sudden here, somebody here caught it, because over the years, it hadn't been caught or whatever, this is how it's going to be done, you know, if they try to fight it, well, the contract states, you know, the only thing that they may say, well, you know, you've been doing it this long, so why is that? You know, we screwed up. That's all. It's got to be honest, we screwed up.
It's one of those things, it's always, I shouldn't say always been, it was done years ago, and it's been carried on and on, and with new people in the office have looked at it and wanted a clarification, what's paid, what's not. And that's when the brakes got pumped, and I said, we need to.
Yeah, because I don't even remember when we initially put it in the Teamsters' contract, because it was, I came here in '02, and it was probably maybe two or three contracts after that, it was just, you know, bargaining chip, so it's not even, it hasn't been in there for us all that long, really, so.
Right, so I agree that that needs to be tightened up, you know, to specify that, but I also want to stress the importance of, of a contract like this, that new hires, anyone that's hired, anyone that's worked here for this long, needs to know that these contracts are written in stone, in general, where we need to clarify, we'll clarify, but just as we go into these other negotiating periods with Teamsters, you know, I want to be careful, very careful, what we're doing here with any sorts of language.
Yeah, and we have in our contract that anybody hired after May of 2018 does not get that money, because that was one of the negotiations, one time, the board wanted, I don't even know what it was, so the Teamsters caved, gave up, any new hirees, basically, to get whatever at that time. It was just a bargaining chip, that's all that happened. I know one time, like the town, town guys down there, they all paid, I thought they, you know, just an example, that the town, the town guys were getting, like, their insurance they paid in full, but any new hirees after a certain date, they had to pay like 50% of the premium. So any of the new hirees were getting it, really. But at the time, they had a group of guys, that nobody was leaving anytime soon, so it benefited them, you know, they just, oh, we'll do this, and.
All the new guys, that happens all the time.
Yeah.
Because they were their new guys, too, or same way.
Just to clarify a little bit, one of the things that has happened over a period of time, when this was arranged, what they considered health reimbursements and stuff were different than what they are today, because the federal government has constantly changed this thing. The last one was put in place, which changed the whole payment system, and what it was called, and how it was derived, last year. It took effect in 2020. Now, what they'll do in the next six months, may change it and call it something entirely different, what can be paid, what can't be paid, some of this was controlled by regulation. And there used to be a thing called a health reimbursement arrangement, and then they were called health reimbursement accounts. They were two different animals, they would look like you were talking about the same thing, but you're not, and that's where some of the confusion may have come in, you know, like, what are we supposed to cover, because, you know, what is it we call this when we created it the first time? And does it cover the same things it did before? And I mean, at least I'm getting the understanding from Butch, that the original understanding, pretty much across the board, should have been just that we'll pay whatever premium you have, and we're just saying to clarify that, that when this was written, that that's all we were going to pay, it's just a premium. And some of these new accounts, there's HRAs, there's IC HRAs, and group H, the whole thing is a whole bunch of, you know, an alphabet soup of what these different plans are. And then within the plans, there's all different kinds of restrictions, and you pay for whatever the employer says that they want to put into it. As far as the contract with the Teamsters or the Police, I think they have actually been pretty good about just sending in and want payments for the premiums that they're going to have to pay. For contracts with the employees, the non-bargaining employees, I think they pretty much understand that that's what it is, we just pay health insurance premiums. The vast majority of people who are submitting claims, it is for simply the premium. So it would appear that that may have been, you know, pretty well understood. The fact that we are getting some other ones that aren't, we need to get them on the right program, just so that we don't have all this confusion, should we pay it, don't we pay it, what are we going to do? Now, I don't know, other than working with the people who have submitted this stuff, and because it's covered for a year, if they pay that much in premiums, if they can submit the statement for that, we'll give them up to the $3,600 a year, as long as that's what they're paying. Right? And it makes, it actually makes the bookkeeping a whole lot easier, and they don't have to keep every scrap of paper.
It actually states, like in the contract, you know, the $300 toward your health insurance, but then there's also, and I'm pretty sure it's how it's worded, so if I opt out of the village's health insurance, I get up to a thousand, the Teamsters is $1,000 a year, and that specifically says medical expenses.
Yes.
So that one clearly says medical expenses, to where the $300 after you retire is health insurance.
Health insurance.
I mean, they're both very, it's clear, you know, there's no wiffens or busts about it, it's just, over the years, with certain things, it's just been slipped through.
Well, technically, we're not changing anything.
Right, yeah, you're not changing anything.
I mean, we're not changing anything, and we're not taking anything away. We're simply carrying the letter, which says health insurance payments, back to where it should be, because these new changes from 2020 have expanded health expenses into people's health insurance. That's not what this is. This is health insurance payment.
I mean, they can buy a policy, it covers all those things.
Right, right.
You know.
Right.
If it's going to cost them an extra $300 from what they have been paying, that's fine, I don't care, we pay that, and they can have, you know, it pays for your aspirin every day, or whatever, you know, however you want to do it. But you have, and the other thing is, these do require that you have health insurance before you can utilize this money. That is specific in the law, that says, if it's one of these reimbursement accounts, you must have health insurance to be eligible for, to actually use the money. I didn't make that up, it's a government issue.
And then, lastly, just to clarify, so this motion would be to affect only the bargaining, or non-bargain contract employees?
No, just to clarify, what we understand that means.
In?
All our contracts. All our contracts. They're all worded exactly the same.
All retired employees.
Yeah, all three are worded exactly the same.
And then, basically, all the people that have retired are no longer part of any union group.
It's not part of the contract.
They're not, they're not in the contract anymore, they're retired.
And it does say we can negotiate it every year, as long as it's principally the same as it always has been. That is included in the contract also.
I would make a motion that we, we clarify that it covers premiums, however, for our non-bargain contract only, and that we address these changes with the bargaining units, to add the similar, similar language to those bargaining contracts. That's my motion.
Okay, just so I get it correctly, it's premiums only for employees?
For the non-bargain contract.
And the only other thing that's going to change, it's not 300 a month, it's 3,600 for the year, or, yeah, for the fiscal.
We're only dealing with people who no longer work for us.
Well.
So are all of them considered, then, what?
Retirees.
So we only should have one retiree policy that stated the same thing? Just asking.
Well, I think that, just sorry, Steve, were you going to? Your motion speaks to changes made in bargaining employees' contracts. Non-bargaining. Non-bargaining. But we're not changing anything, even if we did address bargaining employees? I only ask the board to hesitate there, just, just because I think unilateral changes, no matter what it is, in a bargained contract, has to be agreed upon by the union and the employer, no matter what it is. Right, you're right. At their renewal, we've clarified language before, and they've, they've initialed those changes. Right. I think that's just above board, weighted, or, that's not the right word, that's just, that's just working with our parties that we're obligated to work, work with. But do we, do we include that very specific language in a motion about retired employees who are no longer classified as bargaining or non-bargaining? They're just retirees. I wouldn't think you would need to, because in that paragraph, it said the retiree, it already clarifies. So the retiree refers to the non-bargained retiree in that contract. The retiree, also known as the recipient of the $300 benefit. Right, in the non-bargain contract. So that, we wouldn't have to re, in my mind, restipulate the retiree, or all retirees, because it's already in the paragraph, who that, what that benefit is going to, who that benefit is going to. Who it's for. Right. The employee. Right.
So everybody's considered retiree, and we forget about where they came from? As long as all of the language is the same? Is that what I'm understanding?
No, I don't think, that's not what Eric is saying, that's, I kind of question that. We have, I think, maybe two people?
Mm-hmm.
Or three?
For?
I mean, there's what, Gary, Jenny, and John?
And Holquist, Olson.
No, he's from the place.
No, they were, they were both chiefs, Brian Louser, they would all be non-bargaining, because they moved, like Butch was Teamster, now he's non-bargaining.
See, this is where you run into problems. You have people who were, say, a Teamster, and then they left to become something else in order to get to, in other words, they don't have 20 years in the union, they have 20 years with us.
Right.
And I think a retiree, because that's an agreement between we and they, not between their union, because they're no longer in the union.
But my point is, a blanket clarification to all contracts, bargain contracts or non-contracts, I don't think, I don't think that is a.
I think we can send, we can send the union a letter and see if they object.
Right, yeah, I think it's a negotiating process with the unions. If it's a non-bargain contract, it's my understanding, we can make, I would say it's my understanding, our understanding, that we can clarify that. In a bargain contract, however, I think that needs to be a separate conversation with the bargaining units. I wouldn't change anything in those other documents.
So your motion, just so I get it correct and understand, I'm not arguing.
Yep.
Okay. Is just for the people that, when, at the time of retirement, they weren't part of a union? Is that what you're saying?
Uh, so what?
Or non-bargaining meaning all of the retirees?
All non-bargained retirees, all non-bargained retiree contracts.
Okay.
That's what that motion goes to.
So when they left here, and they were non-bargaining, that's what you're talking about at this point? Not if they left as a Teamster, not if they left as PBA?
Correct. I don't, I wouldn't want to touch, I wouldn't want to touch any bargain.
Because most everybody we have has left as a non-bargaining, because they were in positions that were no longer either PBA or, and the.
Again, like I said, that, I mean, it was negotiated, that it was for health insurance anyway, so the only thing you would have to change with, say, the Teamsters, would be the $3,600 annually, that's the only wording, as far as that goes, would have to be changed.
They're not losing anything.
There's no issue with sending, you know, if you're retired even as a Teamster, there's no issue with sending them a letter stating, listen, you know, this has been done wrong all these years, this is what your contract states, this is how we're doing it, that's all. So you're not, you're not changing anything in that way, by no means. Because it's already in contract, they get it. Trying to basically say, listen, I'm just going to say, the village hall has screwed up, you know, this is what it's supposed to be, so from now going forward, this is what it is, two-year contract.
Pretty much. So do you like your motion, or you want to change it? You want to resend it?
Well, so just to clarify, this is only going to address bargain contracts, or not, sorry, non-bargain contract.
Non-bargaining contract.
And I don't know if we need to make this part of the motion, that we submit this language to the other unions, that we want to make these changes in those contracts? I think it, I split into many areas.
Well, you can address that when you do a negotiation with Roberta.
Right.
As far as the, like you said, you're not changing any of the other language, the only language you're looking to actually change with the Teamsters or anybody is the $3,600 annually, not $300 per month. Other than that, the contract is already there, you're just looking, I mean, you're still getting the same amount of money, so when Roberta sets up with you or whoever's doing negotiations, that's one thing that, you know, the board can say, we want to change this wording to this, and then it should, I don't see where it'd be an issue, but who knows?
That's the worry, is that who knows? Okay, now give us the entire.
She's got it written down.
I think I have it in print, scribbled, but nothing I could read at the moment. I, I think I have it in print, scribbled, but nothing I could read at the moment.
Right, so, in summary.
I, I just have noted that your motion is open for non-bargaining retirees.
Correct.
Cause we're not talking about contracts.
We're not talking about PBA, Teamsters, we're just talking about the non-bargain contract.
If you keep contracts in the equation, I'm gonna stay confused and I won't give you the fuck.
Non-bargain, just non-bargain.
Non-bargaining retirees.
Non-bargain, yeah.
You happy with that?
I've just got notes. A motion to clarify premiums only for employees, $3,600 annually, that you wanna handle the union contract as they expire. And they are considered not, considered under contract as how they left at the point of termination, so like, if somebody wasn't bargaining when they left, they're... And if they left as a Teamster, they're still Teamster, and if they left as an officer, they're still PBA, is that correct? And I'll figure out how to make it worded more simple, but that's your intent?
So the last portion, you'll have to help me clarify.
Okay.
The, when they leave, that...
When they retire. So, are we considering everybody non-bargaining at point of retirement? I thought you said, like, if somebody retired from the Teamsters, have their 20 years, are you still thinking of them as a Teamster, or are they non-bargaining? Should maybe, maybe drop that whole thing and just have retiree reimbursement policy?
I, I, you know, the reason I, and I would explain it to you this way, Eric. If you were a member of a union, for whatever period of time, and then your organization's decided to decertify, you're no longer a union employee. You don't get any benefits that were held back, you only got what you used. This is something we've offered to people after they basically have left the union. You no longer pay union dues, right?
Right, right.
You're not part of the union anymore.
But he's working as an employee towards his 20 years.
This, this is between the village and the individual, as opposed to the union. I understand it's in the contract, but also says you can renegotiate it anytime you want, it's a redone annually. And, this is the annual.
So the latter portion that we're discussing, sorry I'm speaking like I...
Yeah, no, no, I understand.
If, you know, Joe, Joe Schmo was whatever, but now he retired out of the union, he would be entitled to this benefit?
Just as an employee?
As an employee.
It's what the village offers you, if you've put 20 years in as an employee, whether you're bargaining, non-bargaining, it doesn't make a difference, so really, it should be just any retiree, it doesn't make any difference whether, cause once you retire, you're, you're no longer a bargaining person in any of the unions, you are, you've retired.
Right.
This, this policy here, this $3,600 is what the village is doing, or has been doing. So there's really, it's, it just states that you're gonna get that when you've put your 20 years in. It doesn't make any difference whether you were PBA, Teamsters, it doesn't make any difference which, which...
So, I have a question. Saying it that way, that totally gets rid of the whole, new hirees don't get it.
Not necessarily, because there's a clause in the non-bargaining one too.
It's all saying new hirees don't get it?
Yes.
No, for a different reason.
But it said the date, I think, was still the same, right?
Yeah, the date was...
No, the dates were different.
Were they?
Yeah, because I, like I said, I know that wasn't even an option, you know, that, that didn't happen until we put that in the contract with the Teamsters.
What didn't happen?
The $300 a month toward health insurance. Cause like, when I came to work here, that wasn't a thing. We put that in the contract for, as far as for the Teamsters, I don't know about the police department, whatever.
Yeah, that's, currently, that's in there now.
Right.
As well.
Well, it was my understanding that the contracts included that language for the benefit, because that was what the village offered. And the, the union rep said, well, we wanted to stay.
No, we, we negotiated that in the contract for the Teamsters. That wasn't, that wasn't even a thing, the village didn't offer it, you know, it never came out that it was offered. So that's why Roberta, one of the things that she had fall for was for the Teamsters, if they retire to get that money. Cause I was all part of that, but it wasn't, you know, when I, when I came to work here, that wasn't, you know, when I retired, before I got in the contract, there was no money toward health insurance, no. It's just like with the county, if you work for the county, you retire, they don't offer you anything.
No.
So that's why, when we did the bargaining at that time with the contract, like I said, I don't remember what the bargaining points were, and the board at that time approved us to have that.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have any idea when this actually all started, or who started it, or if it was originally...
Did you go to executive?
No.
Non-contract, non-contract, people who
Right.
Decided, they, somebody thought that they oughta get something after they retire. The union people saw that and said, well, hey, if you're gonna do it for these guys, we wanna do it, you know, we want it to, and that was how it got included in the contract. I don't know where it came from or when it occurred. The problem we have right now, I can go back, change that. But the problem we have right now is to clarify what it means to us, and our understanding is, across the board, that after you no longer work for us, we will still extend up to people who have been hired after 2017 or something like that. Whenever it occurs. That our understanding, if you're eligible for it, this is what it'll pay for. That's all I'm trying to do, is clarify what it'll pay for. I, I'm really not trying to get into who gets it, or, or, you know, how they get it, or where it is, that... I just wanna say, the village board, as a, as a group, says that this, this part of any agreement means we will pay for health insurance premiums only, that's it. I mean, I'm trying to make it simple. And very clear to people, so there isn't, well, just the payment to my guy here, and I don't care, it can be three policies, and each one of them's $100. And it still comes out $3,600, I don't care how they get their insurance. But send me a bill for your premium, and if it's more than, more than the $3,600, you're on your own, up until that point, we'll pay for it. And that's all we'll pay for. Uh, I, you know, if, if you want, you want something else done, or you, you know, you don't have enough money to pay the bill, that's, that's not our problem, we're not, we're not covering copays. So the people understand, this is what they need to send us. A bill for insurance, and they can send us one for the whole year, they can send us one for, you know, six months, whatever, however they wanna pay it. And that's what I needed to say, I, I don't, I'm trying to get the mud out of the water.
Yeah, no, and I'm, I'm with you where, where you're at there. I just wanna address things incrementally, and, and, and the appropriate...
Well, I, I agree with Dick though, I think, I think we're trying to make too much of it.
The reason I say is, the, the Teamsters Union now says, people after a certain date are not eligible. The police contract says, it's still in there. Our agreement with the people we just hired, which is one, right?
Two of them last year.
Two of them last year that we hired, that, there's...
They don't have them.
They don't have it.
Yep.
So, we have very few people we have to deal with, they tell you, you're the one that's owed it.
For the, well, with the clause in the non-bargaining, um, there's a date in there, which included me only having to work 10 years. I've already been past the 10, so...
Because that was, that was, they had changed the timeframe too.
Probably get 20.
There was some other things that were done, but the only person that affects is Joey, so far as I know. And Savannah and the rest of them, they don't get it, they're not gonna get it?
They will after 20 years.
After 20 years, there's a change, there's 20 years. So, there's been a couple of changes in this thing, I don't know when they did them, how they did them, why they did them. But I just want to clarify what that statement means. And I don't care if you're a Teamster, you're, you're a PBA...
Bottom line, it needs to be stated that if you're an employee for your insurance, you're gonna get $3,600 a year, period. For insurance, period.
I think it should be in all, in all those contracts.
Well, that's, we can work on that, but for right now, everybody that we're paying is non-bargaining anyways now.
Right.
They're done, they're not into any of the unions.
Right, so non-bargaining is what we'll address here today, is that?
Which, which is everybody who is retired.
I understand, all we need is, is to say, in a contract or whatever, this is how we read it, if it's a problem with the union, we'll take it up there. I don't know, I don't know who the union rep is for, for the DPW. Devin did the whole thing for the PBA, my doctor, I mean, he says, yeah, that's all, we understand this is what it is, not a problem.
And you said you spoke with Brian and the guys?
Yeah, like I said, they all know it's just for health insurance, ain't no stuff...
So they already agree, the, the employees here, they understand, the ones in the union understand what it is.
And how it's written, they understand it the way it's written.
And they understand it's just for premium.
We just need to change it now, so that the people who are submitting things know that...
What it's for.
What it's for, it's not for everything under the sun, it's to pay for...
You're not changing anything.
No, we're not, we're just, the only thing we're changing is that we're gonna do it for $3,600 a year, not $300 a month, because you may get your bill every six months, well, that means you get into year and year, it's just so that you can, up to $3,600 you can pay for your premium, and not for everything in between. And that's pretty, I mean, it's cut and dry as to what it's for, just that we have always, and I, I'll blame myself too, because it's the way it's always, the board has always done it, is that we've always approved everything they've submitted. And it's not right.
As health expenses, as opposed to insurance.
Exactly, and that was just because that's the way it's always been carried on, carried on, carried on, well, we have a new deputy clerk, and she was looking at it and says, well, what do I pay? And that raised a flag and says, you're right, you shouldn't be paying all these dollars, because it does not state that, what that money's for, so we have to clarify it here and now, and then send a letter to all of the people who are on the retiree list that are getting this money, that then, from now on, this is what it's going to be, from whatever date we give it, and we, we agree on that right now.
We're not going down that obscure path of specifics as to how it was addressed previously, because we might enter into potential lawsuit area. Oh, who screwed up? You follow me?
Yeah, that's how it is, as per contract.
Yeah.
So do you wanna resend that and redo it so that it's simplified, or do you wanna go with that? Because I don't know if I wanna agree with that myself.
Right, well, my only thought to, just going through the PBA...
Doesn't make any difference anymore what that stuff is.
Yeah, but, but...
When it comes time to deal with that, we can deal with that, but right now, once they retire, it's in their contract that they're gonna get that money, and it is specified for that. But once they retire from whatever union they're in and they retire out, they become a non-bargaining and they're gonna get that money, and this is how it's gonna be spent, or how they have to spend it. And if we need to have the, the PBA or the Teamsters redo a word or two in theirs, then we'll give them something that they can reach, you know, change their verbiage, so that it states $3,600 a year, and it already states it's just for insurance. So, I mean, that's the only thing that's gotta be changed, they're not losing anything. It's just, in fact, it's better for them, because instead, they could lose that $300 if they have no premium for the one month. But they get a premium bill over here that's high enough that would be more than 300, so I mean, it, it actually benefits them better. You get $3,600 for the year for premiums.
I know I'm being anal, but like, I think if you have a bargain contract, you agree on the language, the employer agrees on the language, the bargaining unit agrees on the language.
And we did.
And that's all happened.
It's all done.
We just need clarification of...
We're just clarifying what we're doing for the retirees now.
Okay.
And if everybody's reading that, um, health insurance payment as premium, we're all set.
And it really, it has nothing to do with anybody's contract with the unions.
We may have to look a little further into what, what is going on here, as I said, the law has been changed a couple of times. What I'm gonna do, they used to have an HRA, okay? Where the employer gave somebody money for expenses for this, for that, whether they're working or not, it does include people who are retired. There were no tax forms to fill out, you didn't notify the IRS, nothing. They have changed that now. And now they have added a whole bunch of letters in front of it, and if it's the same program now, there is a form that has to be sent to the IRS, saying that you're getting this money. Before, it was considered, you know, if your employer wanted to give you this much, and it was to pay for certain things, one of which was the insurance premium. That you didn't have to notify the IRS that you were doing that. But because now everybody has to show that they have insurance, adequate medical insurance and some of this stuff. Apparently, they've changed the names of some of these things, and we may have to send a form to the IRS showing that this money was given to somebody, and that we only paid out for certain things, and that stuff that's covered, it gets very involved. And I say, I think, clarifying it now, because this, this agreement that you're talking about with the unions and everybody else occurred before they changed what these things are. So I'm just saying, you know, trying to keep up with what the, the regulations are, you know, they have SF, I, I forget, I didn't print the whole thing out, but there is, uh, HRAs, HRA, well, there's health reimbursement accounts, health reimbursement arrangements, QSE, HRAs, IC, HRAs, all these things are different animals.
Yeah.
And they're all, all to be, they cover different things. So I think we need to show that our original agreement was done under the old law, and it was basically, it said it would pay for premium, and that's what we're giving you.
All right, um, so to this motion, um, bottom portion reads, "To all, all employees regardless of union," is that how?
If that's what you wanna do, or do you wanna start all over?
No, I, um, I think this should only adjust the, the non-bargain contract, and we submit this letter to the unions, I mean, we don't need to change it all at once. I want to change it all at once, do I think that's the best way to go?
But we don't need to change anything with either one of the unions, it's already stated in their contracts as to what it is, what it pays for. All we are worrying about are our retirees, as they stand right now, what they could submit. Because it's been done wrong for X amount of years. It just needs to be clarified that this is what we are paying for from this date forward, it's just for insurance premiums, not anything else. And you're gonna have $3,600 to use, not monthly, I mean, not $300 a month, but 300, or $3,600 for the year. I mean, that, it's, it's a more, it's a simple motion, it doesn't need to be that long and drawn out, in my opinion.
To give you an example, there's a couple of claims in there that far exceed $300 that we've received that we're, are being asked to pay right now. If we use the actual text that's in this agreement, we'd give them $300. Cause they didn't submit anything last month, the month before, the month before that. We're obligated under that contract, if you read it exactly the way it's written, we'll pay them $300. They expect, they expect more than that.
I'm, I'm all, I'm all there with, with y'all on, on this, this $3,600, like, that's not, that's not the conversation I think I'm trying to have at this point. We're dealing with a non-bargain contract, it should be a non-bargain contract solution. If anything else is adjusted to other, the other union stuff, we address it, we address it separately. If what I'm saying...
Because right now, I...
Makes completely no sense, please let me know. Debbie, is that not following any logical pattern?
Well, right now, we're not dealing with any of the unions or nothing, we are just dealing with the retirees that are entitled to this. That's all we're dealing with, we're not dealing with the, any, any of the PBA or the Teamsters, we're not, we're just dealing with what we have as retirees that are getting this benefit. That's it.
And they're not changing anything?
No, we're not, the only thing we're changing is, you could, you, you can get the whole amount, if you, if you... amount, if you, if your premiums come that way in one shot, versus trying to do it three-hundred dollars a month, which, like you said, it'll be better for the, for the office to be able to do one check instead of a check every month. I think the motion should be simplified to something like that. We don't need to drag it out and add a lot of extra to it. But there again, I mean, I think you guys really need to work it that way, simplify it. It's only for insurance. You're getting thirty-six-hundred dollars a year. You give us your premium receipt that, you know, this is what your insurance is. I mean, that's, and if it's more one month, it doesn't make a difference. You're up to thirty-six-hundred dollars.
And that's what the motion that I made reads.
But you're.
The bottom portion is where.
You're getting into what we don't need to deal with right now, in my opinion.
Respectfully disagree, but.
Okay.
At least we're.
It's, it's gonna be a vote on it. You guys are gonna vote whether you wanna do this or not. It's just gotta be answered. It doesn't need to be that difficult. I think it should be simplified down to what, go ahead, Dick.
I understand what you're saying, but, but I, I agree with Steve as, as much as, I think we just have to, to make it known, that our interpretation is this, and this is what we'll be paying. If there's any disagreement, then they can address this individually, whether it be the union, or an individual who is retired, who is really not covered with, by the union, because we don't have anybody who is retired right now who had twenty years in the union. So we, we don't need to address that problem. But just to let everybody know that our interpretation is that the payment of the thirty-six-hundred dollars is for a year, and it's only to cover premiums, health insurance premium.
And so that, that would not, that clarification of language, not changing anything?
We're not changing anything. It's just.
Granted.
We're letting you know.
Got it.
This is our interpretation.
Okay, so our interpretation.
Yeah.
Is our interpretation going to be put on a bargained contract?
If, if we need to have that included, because there's some question on it, we can have that clarified with the union, if, if someone disagrees with it.
But will that fit, that will be physically going on that non, that bargain contract?
Yeah, we can have that clarified if we want, when the contract is renewed.
Okay, upon, right. All right, so that, that's what I was getting to, that we, we make that clarification upon the negotiation cycle.
Right, and the, and the only thing, again, the only, you'd be changing the annual instead of monthly.
Right. It is not, it's not, I don't think it's a gargantuan clarification, just, just that it's done in the appropriate times.
Okay. So I would make a motion.
You are now?
I will make that motion.
Want me to rescind?
If, if, if you want, we can do it your way. I don't care. I just wanna get it done.
No, I wanna hear, I wanna hear it back from.
So.
I'm just saying, that our interpretation of, of the agreements, that we will furnish three-hundred dollars a month for insurance, as it's written, you just make sure it's just the way it's written in the contract or the agreements there, that that actually amounts to thirty-six-hundred dollars per annum, to pay health insurance premiums only.
The way it's stated.
That's what we, that's how we read that.
Right now, your motion's on the table, so he's contributing his thoughts to your motion. Are you retracting your motion and giving, yielding to him to make a new motion? We're, we're at a, we're stuck in your motion right now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I, I rescind my motion and yield to the right honorable gentleman.
He's just, you're just.
I was getting ready to do that, Steve, thank you.
Okay, so that's.
So that's my motion. Have you got that, Jody?
So thirty-six-hundred dollars per fiscal year for health insurance premiums for employees only.
Yes.
Retired employees. For the retired employees.
Well, it, it says, it doesn't occur until, but that's, just to clarify how we read that part.
I think that's the language. That's why I said it, so that someone will correct me.
Yeah, no, that's, we're not adding a new.
Right, because we're not making any changes, additions, penalties, nothing.
No.
We're interpreting our original village agreement, right?
And we are going to act upon the original agreement, instead of paying everything. It's just, yes.
That comes, that'll come up here in just a second, I think.
And are you adding to your motion about making this clarification upon expiration of the other bargaining units' contracts?
I don't think we need to include that.
So this, this.
Because if that, if that says, this is how we, we read it, and if, if there's some disagreement, they will bring it up. We can, we can.
At the bargaining.
When we, we, if you're bargaining with Teamsters right now, you can tell them, "This is how we interpret it," and if they agree with that, then it's not a problem. The interpretation is fine. If you wanna have them change how the contract reads, say, their interpretation's the same as ours, but that's how we interpret it. Yeah, if you're, if you're working on the contract, you probably ought to be talking to them.
All right, let's, let's, let's get back to this motion and, and read the motion, please, 'cause if I, I'm not gonna vote till you read it and tell me what we've got now.
Okay, the retirees reimbursement policy is the board's interpret, interpretation that the village will pay thirty-six-hundred dollars per year for health insurance premiums for the employees, prior employees, I should probably say. Is that?
Should the motion say the word payments, not premiums, since that's what the agreement says?
Right, but you're interpreting the payments.
Health insurance payments as premiums.
To be premiums.
Yeah.
Is, am I?
That's, that's, yeah, that's really what we're clarifying, is the payment is for a premium.
Okay.
Okay. Which is, I understand, this is what everybody thought all along, but it didn't like.
Yep.
Get interpreted that way.
Exactly. All right. Motion's been made. We've just heard it again. Need a second? No second.
Are we comfortable with the motion?
You can.
All of us?
Um, my only hesitation is, is that this clarification is going to be added to those other written contracts that have been bargained. So the motion doesn't satisfy my concerns there. So I would, I would abstain.
Okay.
If we wanna carry this motion, motion forward.
So is there a second still?
Not yet.
That's your motion?
Yep.
I made a motion.
Then I'm gonna second it.
Read it to me again.
Okay, the village retiree reimbursement policy, it's the board's interpretation of the current contracts, that they will pay thirty-six-hundred dollars per fiscal year for health insurance premiums for prior employees.
I wouldn't say it's the board's interpretation of current contracts. I would say it's the board's interpretation of the village policy.
Is that okay with you, Dick?
I would accept that.
Okay.
If it reads that way, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
'Cause I was, I seconded it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I retract that statement.
Dick's, Dick's.
You can third it. I'm very.
Okay.
So.
Motion.
Motion.
Motion's been made, seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I say aye.
Okay, opposed?
Abstained.
One abstained. And carried. This is what we'll do. Now, with that being said, and this is gonna be a letter sent out to the retirees also, that they know what this is gonna be from what date forward, because right now, we have premium bills that people were, under the assumption that they were gonna get paid for them. Do we go forward and pay what we have now? Would the payment getting, when they get the payment, they'll have this letter stating?
Well, it could be from today.
Yes, but are we gonna pay what we have down there now, because under the understanding, they were supposed to be getting it, as, as it's always been? Do we take care of their last billing, or do we send them the letter stating we're not paying them this? I feel that we should pay them, because they've always been that way, and we are clarifying it now.
If you're gonna start fixing something, you should fix it.
I, I.
Even with what's down there now and sent in?
Whatever's sent in now, we'll pay. That's what I'm understanding you wanna do?
Yes, because they've always been paid.
Correct.
And I'm not saying it was right. I'm just stating that they've always been paid.
Are you motioning that?
I'd make the motion.
Yeah.
And you're seconding that?
Because that's the whole reason why this came up.
Started, yes. So this is what started all of it.
So what are we doing?
We are going to pay what's in the envelope, or the folder down there now.
So.
And then we are going to get this letter.
There's a motion for that?
Yes, yes, there is a motion to.
Who's, you are?
I made the motion.
Okay.
I'll second that, Jody.
Motion made and seconded to pay all the bills that are down there right now from the retirees for this benefit. Might as well say it's a benefit, because we're gonna have to do this. And from now forward, you're gonna have a letter stating that it's gonna be only for the premiums, the way we just agreed upon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
That you, we have to authorize the clerk to pay the bills.
Yep.
Well, in this case, it was the deputy clerk. She was gonna pay them.
Either way, but I mean.
She's the deputy clerk. It's, it's.
So those will be taken care of, and letters will be set out stating that how we do that. So that's, that's good. Is there anything else that needs to be brought up on this part?
Well, you planted a new idea in my head now, that when we go forward to negotiations, maybe we should, maybe we should consider this a give back now on these contracts.
Well, the only contract, the only actual contract that has that in there now is PBA.
Has which one?
Because that was still in there, because it was never negotiated, and we finally agreed to it just a few months ago. It wasn't all that long ago.
Just.
One whole year.
Just the thought.
It's close.
It was this summer.
Yeah. It was this summer.
Maybe six months ago.
Yeah.
But it's not in the DPW, it's not even, it's not in there anymore.
What's that?
In the DPW, that, that the retirees will get through.
Yes, sir.
Up to a certain point in the.
Right, right.
Right.
And then they cut it out.
Yeah.
They gave it away. They gave it back.
Yeah, it was after five.
So it'll always still be in there, just has that date.
Anybody hired after five of two thousand eighteen, they will not get it. Do we have anything else to discuss while we're here as a board, other than I do need to go to executive session for a brief moment? Thanks, Butch, for your input.
Thanks.
I mean, to tie you up too very long.
I need a motion.
Um, we need a motion to go into executive session.
I motion, we move to executive session.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to go to executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
We need an aye to go into executive.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. That's off. I'm gonna kill Sam's and.